Hey Les. I thought I saw him. Oh, yeah, Les. Can you hear me?
Yes, sorry about that. Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great. All right, we'll start in one minute. All right, well, Adam, we have all the board members and we're here live and ready to go.
All right, Michelle, can you call roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Bahavich.
Here.
Mr. McNulty.
Here.
Mr. Belis.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
And Mr. Pierce.
Here.
All right. We're here to discuss our, the second meeting for the South Old State property, which is currently zoned, single-family residential, and being asked to be planned elderly residential district. Can I get a motion to come back for application 01-21-02? Come back from recess?
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Mr. McNulty to come back from recess for rezoning application number zone-21-02, second by Ms. Trabelis, those voting, Mr. Bahavich.
Yes.
Mr. McNulty.
Yes.
Ms. Trabelis.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
And Mr. Pierce.
Yeah.
All right. I guess we'll start out first with, with the applicant. Is there anybody that, that wishes to speak for, on the changes that have been made since our last meeting?
Yes, John Wicks with Real Property Design and Development. I'd like to, to address the changes made since the previous meeting.
All right, John.
Do you want to share your screen or I can share whatever you would prefer?
I don't have anything for you to share. I guess this is as good a sheet as any.
Okay.
I just have a couple, couple notes here that I created. You know, as I mentioned in the first hearing, my proposal was in direct response to the 2018 land use plan, which was published by Orange Township. In that study, there were multiple mentions of a lack of housing options for the aging population and even specific mentions of this part of Orange Township. I feel like this is the perfect site for a P E R D type of housing, considering it's got its direct access to a traffic signal on South Old State and does not have any vehicular access to the other neighborhoods around, surrounding the property. And it's also adjacent to another P E R D. So in my mind, you know, this, this proposal was born out of the study that was conducted by Orange Township and I still feel it's a very perfect, almost a perfect use for this property. Couple of changes that were made since the last hearing. I'll be, the most obvious is the addition of a cul-de-sac at the end of Monroe Drive that was directed by the County Engineers Office so that the, the public street didn't terminate into a private street. And so we made that correction. I did meet with the Fire Chief at Orange Township, shared this drawing with him. He suggested that they would do a formal review at a later date once the plan has been a little bit more formalized, which I guess must be standard practice here in Orange Township. Another change that was made to the plan was a 40% increase in the setback along the north side of the property from 30 feet to 42 feet. Generally, there's a general shift of the site improvements from, to the south and west, mostly to make, to make the adjustment for that building setback as well as just increase the distance to, to the folks to the east as well. We revised the sidewalk configuration so that every resident has direct access to the sidewalk network. We removed the streetlights from the proposal altogether. We added additional landscaping buffer along the east side of the property. We added some screening trees to the west side of the property between the, the northwest building and South Old State Road because we were not able to increase that building setback. And that change, the lack of ability to do that was really just because it's a fixed distance between the east and west property lines and the only real way to accomplish that would be to either reduce the setback between the buildings or reduce the building sizes, the unit sizes themselves, which we didn't feel like we wanted to make the, the footprints any smaller. And the other, I guess, major change here is that we were designating these as condominiums now versus apartments. Many of these changes were in response to public comments that were received at the April, or at the previous hearing. I conducted a, I sent letters out to 15 residents that were in close proximity to the property. And I held a meeting on the property on April 8th of the 15 folks that were invited. Four people came out and we had a great discussion, shared with them the revised plans and showed how I addressed some of the concerns that they had. And I feel like it was a very productive and positive meeting. After that, I became aware of a petition and some other direct and online correspondence that were being circulated about the proposal. And if I can indulge the board, I'd like to address some of those comments at this time.
Yeah, please, John.
Probably the biggest comment, the, the most apparent comment was the concern for property values as they are related to rentals and apartments. I guess I want to go back and reiterate that this is not just these, was, was not intended to be a standard apartment project. It is designated as a 55 and over community. I think it's actually, I did a little research on that. It's a, it's a federal, it's a federal designation of older persons, 55 and over. The 80% rule is, is directed by that federal program. So it's not an Orange Township law. It's not even a state law. It's a federal regulation that when you have a 55 and over community that they, they, the limitations and restrictions that they put on that designation are from the federal level. Because we are changing the product to condominiums, we, we thought about that. We talked about that at the first hearing. After hearing all the feedback from the residents and from the township folks as well, we decided to go ahead and make that, make that, make that change. We do reserve the right to, that the individual condo owners would reserve the right to be able to rent their units out because there still is a market for folks who want to rent in that, that age 55 and over demographic. As a matter of fact, I received two phone calls today from, from residents inquiring about this and the, and the potential to be able to rent a unit here after they sell their, sell their properties in the area. So that was kind of a confirmation for me that this is certainly a, a product that's in demand. I wanted to make it clear that at no point did I ever suggest that this would be a low rent or section eight housing. In fact, I did state in the previous, previous hearing that it was going to be market rate rents. There was some concern that I was not forthcoming with specific dollar amounts and rent amounts and I, I was as forthcoming as I could be. Meaning it's, it is going to be driven by the cost of the project, which we, we don't have full design plans on this and we don't know what the requirements are going to be yet. So the zoning is the first of many steps to get to that level, to get to that position. But just to reiterate, we, we were not ever looking to make this a subsidized housing project. I know that there are some folks that are for that and I, I agree with that. I think that there are places where that is necessary. I just don't feel like this is a good location for that based on its proximity to single-family developments and, you know, other longstanding neighborhoods. The other, another issue that I kept hearing was the, I think there was some question as to whether I was being misleading in one of my divergence requests. At, at no time did I ever state or imply that this project was going to be affiliated in any way with the Innet Bear Trail. The, the point I was trying to make was that together, they're going to be a P E R D designation, P E R D district, which is over 10 acres. They're, they're contiguous and they are similar type of housing option. One independent living, one assisted living, and they work well together. So I was not trying to be misleading. And in fact, I, the, the reason I proposed the variance or the divergence was because we know we are under 10 acres specifically for this parcel. I was not trying to be misleading. There were some comments or questions about the existing house, whether or not I was forthcoming with information on what the intent for the existing house was. I, I thought it was clear. If it wasn't, I apologize, but the, the existing home, which we now show on 0.488 acres has never been part of this application. It's always been intended to be split off and just sold as a single-family residence, not converted into any kind of office space or, or anything like that. It's just, it's just going to remain a, a single-family home in the neighborhood. And in fact, I, I feel that adds to the character or helps to remain, maintain the character of your drive along South Old State Road as you see some of these older homes that are fronting on the property with the developments back behind there. This is a consistent with that, with that premise. That's really all I wanted to go through at this time. I'm obviously able to answer questions. I also have my architect, Michael Maestros, on the call with us here as well as civil engineer Kyle Weber with Cleaners Group. So if there's some questions that I cannot answer, they certainly can. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Adams, I'm sorry, can I make one comment? The commission from the last meeting were asked if we could have legal counsel present. So we do have Pete Griggs, our counsel here, if you have any further questions.
Yes, thank you. At this time, we're going to open up for board's comment.
Well, I like the fact that it's condos and it's gone, I, I always thought that ownership of this was critical. It was critical for me. I guess whether somebody owns a condo and decides to lease it or rent it, now that's okay. Who owns that private home that's in front here? Is there, who owns that piece of property and that home? Is that a private owner that could be, that could be, will be sold at some future time, five years, 10 years from now?
So it, it's all part of the same property right now. It's five and a half acres. It's basically the, the old house, the barn and all the open space. And I'll be purchasing, I'm not, haven't purchased it yet. My purchase is contingent on the approval of the zoning and some other due diligence items. But once I purchase the property, I will do the lot split as we've kind of shown with the survey. And I do recognize we didn't update the survey. I didn't want to go to the expense of that until we felt like we had a, a positive move forward here, but there's, there will have to be a, a minor change to the survey because of the cul-de-sac. But that would just be sold off as an individual, single-family lot with the house on it.
Okay, so wait, but you own the property or will own the property at some future time, right?
Yeah, the, the lot split would not take place though after I purchase it. And then I will be the owner of the house until such time as I complete the lot split and sell it to a, an end user who, who would use it as a dwelling unit.
So your intention is to leave that as a single-family home and not to add more condos to your development?
That's correct. If somebody bought the house and wanted to change its designation, they'd have to come before you all and, and rezone that piece of property. That's not part of my rezoning application.
Okay. And the, the private streets, will there be, there'll be a homeowners association, condo owner's association?
That's correct.
For this and they will maintain all the internal streets and?
Yes, sir.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm glad of the, with the changes you made with the sidewalks and the setbacks. Those were all good things.
Yeah, John, I, I couldn't agree more with Dennis there. I, I think that you've, you've definitely listened to, you know, both comments from the board and public on this and you know, increasing the setback lines, adding the additional screening to the landscaping to, to really screen out all those single-family residents as you wrap that around the, the back there on the east side. The sidewalk connectivity that you've added in. You know, I, I just think these are all good improvements and, and I agree with you. I think this is a good fit for this particular lot, given what's right next to it.
Thank you.
Yeah, just my thoughts are, you know, I certainly appreciate you reaching out to the residents and connecting with them and gaining some, some insight and certainly taking their comments into serious consideration and making some changes. So that's, that's a good thing there. Do have a couple of questions. You noted that 55 and older was a federal designation. Is that something you have to apply for? And if so, is that something you've already done or planned to do or how does that?
Sorry, I, I wanted to pull up an email that I got from my attorney who was unable to join us. He's basically, you know, in a nutshell, said that he sent me some information. It's called the Housing for Older Persons. Housing for Older Persons is what it's called. And again, I take exception to that since I'm almost 55 and I don't consider myself an older person, but hey, here we are. But it did, he did list, a, a list of overview and requirements to qualify as housing community for older persons, the following must be met. These are the criteria through the federal government. At least 80% of unoccupied unit, at least 80% of unoccupied units must be occupied by at least one person 55 or over. I guess unoccupied, that probably means if you're trying to adapt an existing facility to meet this criteria, when in fact we're starting out from the get-go as 55 and over, so 80% of unoccupied, 80% of occupied units must have at least one 55 or over resident. The owner or manager of the community must publish and adhere to policies and procedures that demonstrate an intent to provide housing for persons 55 and over. And the community must comply with HUD's Housing and Urban Developments regulatory requirements for age verification of a resident. So and then there's a list of, of, of policies and procedures to accomplish this. And what I can tell you today is that we intend to comply with this. I don't understand most of it. It's, it's mostly legal jargon, but my intent here is, and I'm verbalizing this to you, is that you know, we, we want this to be a 55 and over community. We, we're not going to mandate that it's 100% 55 and over. We're going to follow the federal regulations, which is also what Orange Township appears to have adopted. So we'll use phrases as like adult living, adult community, those kinds of things published in, in common areas. And I'm happy to share this document with, with y'all if, if you would like me to send it to you, but I believe it's my attorney's Tom Johnson summary of, of this federal policy.
Mr. Chairman, this is Pete Griggs. If I can just chime in real quick.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad this was brought up because the, your code requires pretty much reiterates the, the HUD requirements and the Housing for Older Persons Act. What I would like to see, you know, I know Mr. Wicks mentioned, you know, some of the sample policies and procedures. I, I would like to see the development text, those included as examples as part of the development text. Only from the standpoint that I think that would ensure that, you know, it will be in a, an age restricted community. So at some point, you know, I'm not saying to hold it up, but I, I had talked to Michelle and we thought if the, the commission agreed to make that a modification that they would provide those sample policies showing adherence to and verification of the occupancy requirements when they get to the trustee level, if you will, to make that part of the development text. So that's just certain, that's just a recommendation from, from our office. And I think that would answer any type of questions on enforcement down the line. So.
I agree. Usually, also when we have condo developments, we require an example of the condo documents to show, not only, like you said, that this is, you want the development text to show that this is an age restricted community. The text should also show that the intent is for this to be a condo with a condo association. So if we could have sample condo documents to show that that is indeed your intent, that this would be a condo. I think that would help the debate over whether this is a rental or a condo complex as well.
And that's very, that's very typical of, of, of most communities and, and we did, Christine, include that as part of the modification.
Okay.
It was a sample.
So I would say both of them should be included, but definitely, like you said, the age restricted guidance.
So it has to be a sample, right? I mean, we understand the final doc would, would, would vary. But I agree, sample condo tech deck and just the related policies, procedures that are required by HUD. And I think those are made part, I don't have any issues with respect to enforcement. And again, if the commission deems fit, you know, we've included that as a modification so we can continue to move the application along.
I, I don't have a problem with that. It's fair to, to want to see those documents at the trustee level. I, I, for some reason, I was thinking that providing sample documents was at the final development plan level typically. But I, I don't have a problem doing that. It's, it's something that we, we can commit to doing prior to the, prior to the trustees hearing.
And, and Mr. Wicks, I'm glad you brought that up as well, that we, we don't, we, we only have a require one development plan. So.
It's a one-step process.
Correct. So that's, that's why we wanted to include it now because there is no next step. And then as you can see on the share screen, we are going to replace preliminary development plan with final development plan throughout your application. So, because it's just a one-step process. So that's why we just wanted to have it included.
Well, consider me embarrassed for not knowing that, but no, no problem at all. And I, I certainly will comply.
All right. One of my other questions is you'd indicated, yeah, this is part of the Hopper rules and so forth by HUD, which is cool. I, I like, again, as I originally stated, that it's, it's targeted for 55 and older. So we're going to condos now. What are these going to sell for?
Les, what was your question? I'm sorry, it cut out a little bit.
Sorry about that. So this is condos now. What are they going to sell for? How much are we gonna, what's the entry level?
All I can really say is, again, it's, it is based on cost. We're not, we're not looking to provide, you know, we're, we're doing this for profit. But you, the, the sales price of a property is based on its cost plus some markup and, and dictated by market conditions. So I, I, I don't even want to hesitate to throw a number out there and then be kind of stuck with that down the road. Market rate, it'll be whatever the market can bear at this time.
And my final question is, certainly I did see lots of comments regarding section eight. I'm not sure what necessarily drew that. Certainly we had some discussion about it last time, but not be sure what drove the numerous comments about that. However, you did make a comment. I just want you to clarify, give me some color around it so that I can understand or some translation. You indicated that subsidized housing or maybe affordable housing would not be appropriate for this community or for these residents and, or the single family next to it and the area. What do you mean?
Well, I think there is a stigma attached to the connotation of section eight or subsidized housing. And this is a.
Just curious real quick, do you agree with that statement?
Um. It's a, it's a perception. I don't necessarily agree with it or disagree with it. I, I think it's, it's a perception and, you know, in our, in this world, perception is reality in a lot of cases. You've got a lot of proud homeowners here that like the fact that their properties have, have seen their property values increase and they certainly would not, not like to have something come in here and reverse that direction. And sometimes the stigma of having a subsidized housing neighborhood adjacent to your neighborhood, I think does have, does bring with it a negative vibe. And I'm not saying that that's my opinion. I'm just saying that's a public perception. And we've heard that comment from at least a dozen of the, of the letters that I saw.
But you don't necessarily agree with that perception, right?
I, I don't because I know that there are strict procedures in place to, to vet any persons who are taking advantage of public assistance for housing. But with that being said, it, you know, it, if this were going to be strictly a rental community, I could see that being more of an issue. But since it's now not a rental community, it is a condominium community and individual owners are going to be allowed to rent their homes out. You know, they, they can rent it out to whoever they wish to rent it out to, I suppose, as long as they meet, as long as they can afford the rents.
Right. So it's, so, so, yeah, that makes sense. So if someone comes along and they're willing to accept section eight or subsidized voucher, what have you, it still becomes a, to some degree, a subsidized property, right?
Well, I, I don't know the specifics of it. I, I think that at this price point, it's, it's unlikely that subsidized housing would be a, a component here. However, I, I don't know the laws or, I know we, I know due to disparate impact, we can't say anywhere that there will be no subsidized housing. And we don't plan to say that.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, I think Les, I, I mean, and Pete, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I, I think that that's not something that, that, that any, I guess, person can really dictate. I mean, if, if, if someone was to come in and rent and they qualify, it, it's not something that necessarily is, is something John Wicks or anybody in his organization's able to say yes or no to, correct?
Correct. I mean, it's going to be no different than any condominium association, in particular when it's turned over, you know, they can, they can impose their own type of rental restrictions. Obviously that can't be one. But they can restrict the number of rentals and all those type of things. So, so, yeah, so no, it's really, it's something that Mr. Wicks can't answer with respect to whether or not someone may in the future qualify.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to understand start of why it wouldn't be an appropriate product.
Yeah, I mean, it, yeah, yeah, it's something, it's something that would apply almost to any, any development such as this, that, you know, if, if you, you couldn't necessarily restrict it because I think that's against federal law. So I, I think is what John's getting at and, and is stating. So okay, so is there any, any other comments, Les?
No, that is it.
Okay.
I actually looked into the section eight a little bit today and they would have to apply for it to be section eight to the federal government, you know, and, and obviously there's no intention from, from John or his department or his people to apply for that. I don't believe you could apply, a single owner of a condominium could apply for that. I don't believe that would, that would fly in the federal government and their documentation.
Well, if you want to talk about it, I'll, I'll educate you on the program, but that's not accurate, but you can talk.
I'm not sure. I looked into it a little bit. I, we're right, Les. I don't have all the facts for that, so.
Yeah, yeah, we could talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say. Yeah, I mean, I would say it's kind of a moot point at this, just, just because it's, it's not even something that is being pursued and, but it's not something also that's being restricted, I guess, if you want to put it that way. So I, I mean, if we can just move on from that, I think we all kind of have an understanding that, you know, that's, that's not the intent, but it's also not something that we're, that anybody's here is saying that it's, it's not a possibility. So it's, it's not really, yeah, relevant. So Christine, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I think you had a comment, you were about to start.
I have a couple. If it's all right with everybody else on the board.
Please.
There's a couple of things. I appreciate the applicant tried to incorporate a lot of our comments like about the sidelighting that's been removed. We now have light fixtures on the units that the sidewalks were added, more setbacks, more landscaping was added. I did have a question because the original development plan had access for the single family home on South Old State, the old farmhouse that's remaining. How is that now, what access is being provided now? Because it looked like originally it was going to vacate the curb cut on Old State and have to use, I guess, is it the public drive and some of your private streets to get in and out, which I'm not opposed to. I just wanted to know, is that still the plan? Has that been removed? What has the county engineer, who really has the final say? Have they seen your new site plan and how this access is going to happen?
Yes, good questions. What I did was I basically separated the existing driveway from the proposed emergency driveway completely. That was at the suggestion of the county engineer. Now, they have a policy typically, if you have a new development and you have new roads, that existing houses have to take access to the new roads. In this instance, because it's private streets, that's where we ran into a kind of an issue. So what we show right now is two separate entrances. There is, the cul-de-sac will abut that property. And I think the, the resolution is if there, that house is ever torn down and a new house is put up, that they have to take access to Monroe Drive and they have to vacate their access to South Old State Road.
Okay, because I was curious, because I understood that that was the county engineer is trying to limit curb cuts on Old State. So the county engineer has seen this new site plan with the cul-de-sac, has the fire department as well. Did they review the new site plan or did they review the old site plan for the development plan?
I sat down with lieutenant and we looked at this site plan. I did that, I think it was last Thursday or Friday. And he, he said, yeah, from what he can tell, it looks like it's not going to be a problem. But what he wanted, he didn't want to go through the process of measuring everything right now until he knew that this was going to be the plan that we're going with. So he said he reserved the right to review it at a future date.
Yeah, yes, and I confirmed with Mike Clark from the fire department that they did have that meeting and he was okay moving forward with it.
Okay, thank you, because usually there's letters provided by service providers, like, you know, the county engineer or the fire department saying that they reviewed it. But since they were missing from your application, I wanted to make sure it was on public record that these meetings had occurred.
Understood.
So I think that's about it. I know you still have two divergences. Normally I'm against divergences. In this case, because you're saving the old farmhouse, instead of tearing it down, I'm willing to grant you a couple of extra units because you would have been able to fit them in if you tore down that house. And I like the idea, since I'm preservation minded of keeping the farmhouse. And I tend to agree with Adam in terms of, I know the neighbors would like to see single family homes here, but because the access is limited off of that public drive that goes in front of the existing planned elderly residential district, I don't have a problem having this also be a purr because I don't know if single family homes are the best use here. So I do agree that this seems like a good compromise. It is age restricted. And if those documents involving the age restriction and the condo docs are included in the develop, final development text that goes before the trustees, I'd feel a lot better. And those are pretty much my notes. So thank you, if someone else wants to comment.
Thanks, Christine. I agree with a lot of what she said. I like that the private driveway for the farmhouse was removed from that private street. I do like that the sidewalks were added. I like the landscaping that was added and I like the perception from South Old State that it's still a single family residence there. So I do like all of that. My only comment is about the privacy between that single family house and those two buildings that are at the backs are facing that single family house. If you could add some additional landscaping, both for that future owner of that farmhouse and the future owners of those two, those two units right there. I looked on the landscaping plan, I only saw, I think it was like three or four trees. Yeah. So I would just suggest adding some additional.
There's a pretty good distance between the back of that house and the property line. I think it's fifty feet or fifty-five feet or something like that. So that's all grass at this time. But, and, and like you said, we've got four street trees there proposed. Yeah, we could probably throw some additional evergreens along the back of the single family lot. But I agree with you, that would probably provide some more privacy there.
Absolutely, thank you.
We're happy to do that.
All right, is there any further comment from the board?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, at this time, we'll close the meeting for comment. And Michelle, was there anything you had before moving forward with the recommendation?
Yeah, I just want to say, I know there's a lot of people submitting on the via chat room on the YouTube channel. And I try to relay the message to as many residents as possible throughout this today and last week. But we did have a public comment meeting in March regarding this application and the comment was closed after that meeting. I know a lot of residents were informed after the fact. We are legally required to notify residents within two hundred feet of the subject property, which we did. And we did have residents in attendance for that meeting. However, everything you email, call, we take notes and the comments will pass along to the Board of Trustees as we will reopen public comment then. And I guess the last thing before we take, make any recommendations, I can add that evergreen language if the board would request that.
I have no objection to it. I think it's a, it's a good point. I know most of the comments we've heard are from neighbors to the north and to the east, but it would make life potentially better and easier to sell the property if there was that buffer.
Okay. All right, with that said, hold on, let me see here. So can I get a recommendation for approval of zoning application Z O N dash twenty-one dash zero-two of Real Property Design and Development LLC with the stated modifications?
I apologize to jump in, but I think the way that was written, it said the western property line.
Eastern, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, I'm glad you asked. Thank you.
It wants to read it.
All right, I can read it, but I might have to, I have a barking dog in the background, so I apologize. All right, motion by Christine Traballas to recommend to the Board of Township Trustees, known as the Board, the conditional approval of zoning application Z O N dash two-one dash zero-two of Real Property Design and Development LLC, the property owner requesting the rezoning of four point nine six plus or minus acres from Farm Residential District F R dash one to a planned elderly residential district P E R D with modifications upon finding that it is in the interest of the public convenience, comfort, prosperity or the general welfare and is sufficiently in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The version of the application recommended to be approved consists of those materials submitted by the applicant in hard copy binder titled Independent Living at South Old States, the pages of which are stamped received with Orange Township zoning above and February twelfth, twenty twenty-one, superimposed by Orange Township zoning, modified as reflected in the updated development plan dated April twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Collectively, the development plan and including additional modifications listed below. One, the applicant pursuant to section fifteen point oh-three A, three and four, and section fifteen point zero-nine T shall provide as part of the development text a sample condominium declaration and related policies and procedures showing adherence to and verification of the occupancy requirements for an age restricted fifty-five years of age or older residential development under the Housing for Older Persons Act. Two, the applicant shall place each instance of the phrase preliminary development plan with final development plan. Three, provide additional evergreens along the eastern property line of the existing single family home farmhouse. Further move that the zoning secretary shall certify a copy of this resolution to the Board.
I second.
Motion made by Mr. Traballas to recommend, or resolution to recommend approval of zoning application number Z O N dash twenty dash zero-two of Real Property Design and Development LLC with the modifications stated. Second by Mr. McNulty, those voting, Mr. Vahobich?
Yes.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Ms. Traballas?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
And Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Great, we have a motion. John will be in touch for next steps and that's all I have for the board this evening.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate the opportunity and I look forward to working with you on this.
Thanks, John. All right, meeting adjourned.
All right, thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.